Good evening, everyone. Tonight is Tuesday, June 4th. It's about seven o'clock. We are in room 206 in Town Hall. Tonight is a planning zoning commission public hearing and general meeting. We have a pretty straightforward agenda tonight, so we'll get right into it from the beginning. First item on the public hearing is coastal site plan review number 163 Days and Dog, landfilling, excavation, and regreating application. Oh, sorry, George.
Oh, don't be. I didn't notice.
I counted four noses.
Seemed I a Pepsi tonight.
Proposal to application number 58C Charlie PL 24-60, Mark and Margaret Mayville, at 23 Tokenique Trail. Proposed to fill and regrade in association with the construction of a new driveway and parking area and perform related site development activities within regulated areas, including the installation of storm warning management. The 1.77 plus minus acre subject property is located on the south side of Tokenique Trail, approximately 900 feet east, southeast of its intersection with Arrowhead Way, and is shown assessment number 69 as lot 38 in the R1 residential zone. So this is a house or a development house of two houses that we subdivided a couple of years ago. We approved development a couple of years ago. They had a shared driveway. Now they want to have an unshared driveway.
Yep, that's correct.
What do we got?
That's correct, Steve. The application was submitted under conformance with sections 810 and 850 of the Darien zoning regulations or coastal site plan and landfilling regreating application regulations. The application was referred out to Joe Canis of Ty and Bond. He submitted comments for the record dated May 17th. The applicant's representative, Land Tech, submitted a response to Mr. Canis's comments on May 30th, and Joe Canis submitted a final memo yesterday, June 3rd, endorsing the project. The application was also referred out to Connecticut Deep. We received comments from that agency on May 24th. They had a few questions relative to drainage in connection with the new proposed driveway. However, as I mentioned, Mr. Canis did sign off on the engineering and drainage aspects of the proposal. The application was also referred out to the Health Department. David Knopf, the Director of Health, submitted an email for the record on May 20th noting no comments with the application or no issue with the application. So from what we understand of the application, the driveway makes up about 3,100 square feet of impervious area with a drainage swell on one side of the driveway which would drain towards Tokenique Trail. The drainage would flow down Tokenique Trail to a catch basin that would discharge to the Long Island Sound from that location. The driveway is going into an area on the property which is a lot of ledge in that area, so we understand that there's going to be a fairly significant amount of blasting required to put in the driveway. The grade will go down anywhere from about nine to 11 or 12 feet of cut into that ledge area. And Steve, as you mentioned, yes, the property to the east 21 Tokenique Trail was recently subdivided in 2021, 2022, and the subject property was originally accessed from that 21 Tokenique Trail property. However, after the subdivision, that access is no longer there. So the current property owner accesses the property through 25 Tokenique Trail through a shared driveway in that location. So the purpose of this new driveway is to essentially eliminate that shared condition and allow for sole access to the property from Tokenique Trail. The applicant's representative, Andy Sumalidis from Land Tech, is here this evening to present the details of the application and answer any questions that you may have.
The only thing I would add to what you said, Joe Canis signed off on the application after he made, they made suggestions and changes that they put forth. That's what I wanted to make sure of. Andy, welcome.
Good evening, for the record, Andy Sumalidis from Land Tech.
Go ahead.
So I'll just walk you through some of the history that was just recently described. So this here in yellow is 23 Tokenique. This is 21 Tokenique that the Mayvilles also owned at one point and recently sold in December. And you'll probably be seeing me, maybe not Steve, but me at the end of the month for another application for a new single family here. So access to this property was through an existing driveway here that looped through here, and then you could see still remnants of the old driveway, but now there's, you know, it's been cut off with a row of evergreens. So the access was through here to get into the property. And they also had, this is 25 Tokenique, you can see this double kind of shows that it's a shared agreement here for, it's a fairly tight driveway to access both of these lots. So you could also see here, not a whole lot of frontage on Tokenique Trail, not many options to come through this property. So what we have to do in order to get this driveway in, this is essentially the big ledge outcropping that we'll have to basically blast and hammer through to create this new driveway. This driveway is 12 feet wide. It's about 225 feet long. As Fred mentioned, they were, I think the deepest cut is about 12 to 13 feet. We're looking at about 1,400 cubic yards of rock material to be removed.
How many trucks is that?
Depending on how it comes out, you know, how big the pieces are, because in soil you usually get in a triaxial about 20 yards, but with ledge, obviously more voids, depending on how, probably in the 14 range, you'll call it 100 truckloads, probably coming out of this site. We're not repurposing any of it. It's all coming out, right? It's not like there's future development or any other development like there's going to be next door. If we have to do some ledge blasting, we could reuse on site. This is all coming offsite, right? So it's going to be blasted, probably what they call live loading, like, you know, getting rid of it immediately. There's no room to really, I mean, there's some room to stockpile, but it'll probably be blasted and hauled out. We anticipate, we're actually starting to talk to contractors now to get some pricing. It's going to be probably a fairly expensive endeavor as well, and also get an idea of what their thoughts are. I mean, nobody's done any testing on the ledge, you know, sometimes it comes out easy, but we anticipate about a month's worth probably of, you know, drilling and then blasting and cleaning it up, and then probably, you know, another few weeks after that to actually clean it all up and construct it. So it's probably a two-month project from start to finish to get this driveway in.
The only thing I would suggest, and you kind of sort of said it, you know, soil is 20 cubic gallons. I'd rather see keep it coarse.
Right.
And make it 14 versus trying to make it fine to make it.
Right, yeah, we're not doing any rock crushing on site, so the idea is we're just blasting and hauling.
Get it blasting, get it out of there.
Exactly. So we'll get more idea of means and methods when, you know, we start meeting with some of these contractors. We actually just had the driveway staked this week, and we're going to go walk it with a few contractors to get an idea of that. As part of the driveway construction, we provided this detail here, this kind of driveway cross-section, so you got, you know, it's kind of, you're going to be driving through a valley for a good portion of it coming through. So, you know, we have a 12-foot wide driveway, then we're overblasting about three feet on each side to get, you know, landscaping buffer, and then also drainage swell on one side, and then you'll have a rock face on both sides essentially. In the drainage swell, we are basically overblasting and putting a sand median, so the driveway's pitched to one side.
Can you show me where the swell is? I couldn't really figure that out.
Sure. So this is the swell in here. So this driveway is super elevated. It's all pitched to one side. It all pitches to this side, so this is all, you know, highlighted green, kind of overblasted and creating land facing on the edge. Along this shoulder here, through the quality, inside the swell, we have all these checkdans, which basically is stone, which allows the water to build up and then get as much infiltration as we can out of it. And then it ultimately comes through and spills out into Tokenique Trail. It goes down to Tokenique Trail, and right about here, there's a catch basin, and that goes right out to Scott's Cove. And between 25 and, I don't know if it's 27 or not, but the next property owner, there's a height that goes out.
Did you approach the association yet? Can you get my headset?
No.
There it is. Amazing.
How that works.
Great. Okay.
So that's essentially, you know, and then in these swells, there are, you know, to Joe Canis's recommendation, we put some perforated pipes to help facilitate that drainage, to make sure there's no standing water, and it'll all get out to Tokenique Trail.
That was the stuff about the standing water with regard to if freezing in the winter?
Correct. To make sure we get all the water out of that canyon.
Okay.
Here's kind of like the high point. So this goes up 3% off the road and then 8%, and then this goes down. This little portion of asphalt gets into this gravel driveway. This also little portion here, we're looking to excavate out also. There's an existing wall right here, and then there's a rock ledge right here. So I don't anticipate this being a lot of work or a lot of effort to create this little, you know, like two-car parking court adjacent to the house.
How are you going to get there? Top cat?
Yeah. Yeah, here? Yeah, you can get an excavator here. They recently actually just were redoing their septic and limited room to work, but they've had, you know, there's heavy equipment that can get there.
Because you have enough clearance between where the property line is and where the section is?
Yeah. We have about probably 25 feet here.
Okay.
To work. So that essentially is, you know, our proposal.
Okay. The thing we have, something we have to go over is the times of day of blasting?
Sure.
And hours? I mean, I'm not going to do the fire marshal stuff, that's pro forma.
Mm-hmm.
But how many hours a day, how many trucks a day, that kind of stuff? Because we got to make sure we know all that stuff for the record and for the neighbors.
Okay. I don't have that answer right now, but if there's a limit we can put on it, I'm more than happy to discuss it. I don't know what you guys done in the past, or something that's standard, I would say, that Darien enforces. We're more than happy to look at that, but again, I haven't met with any contractors. It's really, I need to figure out what they think their means and methods are.
We definitely have limits. I mean, I know for a fact we've put limits on it.
Yeah, usually it's not too early in the morning. I mean, I don't think people want to wake up to something like that, so.
School buses go through there at about 8:15 in the morning.
Yeah.
Yeah, they do. My son, my son's on it every day.
Present new world.
So that could be, maybe it's.
So it could be a 9:00 AM start or something, and then?
Yeah, 9:00 to 3:00 or something like that.
It's going to be, well, they come back after school at 3:00-ish is when they leave Tokenique around 3:00, 2:55 or so. So it's got to be done by 3:00.
Okay.
The last truck's going to leave by 3:00, so it means you stop blasting at 2:30. Again, that's only going to be during the school year.
Yeah, yeah, summertime.
Oh, true. Right, this might be a summer project.
It's not a whole lot of kids going to school in August.
No, there's not a lot of them.
Right.
Yeah, I guess that would be up to the commission if you want to say, say something like 9:00 to 3:00 during the school year, and outside the school year.
9:00 to 5:00, something like that.
Yeah, something like that.
I mean, if I, I know Mr. Mayville's not here, but if I know Mr. Mayville, he'll want to get this thing started tomorrow.
Yes.
He's not, it seems to be, he's got legs to wait around.
Yeah.
He's very patient, but he's not.
Right.
He's going to go.
He's ready to go.
Yeah. Do you think he would be starting as soon as July 1st? Is that too?
It's impossible to say.
Yeah, I don't think that we can get a contractor there within a month and say, hey, because we haven't signed anybody up yet. I doubt anybody has the capacity for this type of job that's not busy.
Rinted Road Extension. You got nobody. Nobody has the capacity for us.
Yeah, I doubt we're starting July 1st.
So then it's going to default to September, so it is going to be a screw year.
Right.
All right, so that matters. Your input matters and stuff like that. Okay.
Yeah, we're good at 9:00 to 3:00.
Great. Any other, I mean, it's kind of sort of straightforward, is a lot going on, you know, but it is what it is. Joe Canis, when I read his letter, was really thorough review, and you hit all of his answers and changed all the plans to conform to what he said, and he's pretty good on it. Any questions for the commissioners, you could, Jamie?
I guess I'm just not clear on what the swell looks like, if anything. Is it completely buried, or is it on top without any curving or something, or what?
So there's a 15-inch depression.
Okay.
So water would she flow across this driveway, it's pitched this way, hit into this swell that's 15 inches deep. We're overexcavating 12 inches below that and put in a media, a sand media filtration in there.
Okay.
And also, what you see here in this cross-section, that's a stone checkdane.
Okay.
So what happens is it slows down the velocity. It also helps it get into the underlying soils. I know rock is rock, but it is still porous, and we'll get some type of infiltration through that. But this is what's called a wet swell. It's meant to stay wet and be wet and planted with basically wetland-type plantings to help absorb it, so that's what goes in here. It's like wetland grasses that get planted in here, and that's how you, it's called a wet swell.
Okay.
Wet water quality swell.
You put in a lot of golf balls and stuff like that.
Okay, that's okay. I got to do something when we're sorted. And, all right, so heavy rain, you think the sheeting from the other side of the driveway is going to be stopped by that swell, and it's going to then be directed to Tokenique Trail?
Yeah, so the purpose of the swell is just to treat the first one inch of runoff. Because we're so close to the sound and we're discharging, we don't have to reduce the storm event.
Okay.
For a 50-year storm that's typical in Darien, because we're right at the end of the watershed, right? So the water comes out into Tokenique Trail and basically right into Long Island Sound.
Okay. So if it happens over top, shall I say, the swell, and it goes to probably, well, there's some distance before the next property, but.
It hits the rock wall, doesn't it?
Does it?
So basically goes.
On Tokenique Trail.
Along this curb line, and there's a catch basin right here.
Yeah. Yeah, I'm just worried about the first curve, shall we say, off of Tokenique Trail on the driveway.
This shared drive?
Nope. The red, the red ink part, yeah.
This is the proposed driveway.
Yeah, and the swell that we're discussing is.
Is along this side.
Okay, but there's a part where it's no longer bordered by the rock, by the ledge, right? According to the map here.
Through here, yes.
Yeah, okay.
Correct.
So that's what I'm concerned. What happens if it overtops that? Where does that water go? You're just saying it's going to go down to Tokenique Trail and get to that catch basin anyway.
Correct.
Won't interfere with the neighbor.
Right, so right now, I mean, there's a, this is all rock ledge, right? Here's kind of the high point. Runoff today hits this rock ledge, and it's fairly steep. It all goes into Tokenique Trail today.
Okay.
Right, so that occurs today. It's just no.
No, no change or detriment to the neighbor?
Correct.
Okay.
To George's point, there's a spot elevation, I think it goes 14.6 in the center of the road or the driveway, down to 13.9.
It's in the north edge, at the driveway entrance.
Yeah.
The middle of it's 14.6, and then the northmost edge is 13.9, so it's still pitched even at the road to Tokenique.
Correct, yeah, so this shows that this driveway, this is the gutter line, and it drains this way. The high point is like somewhere a little further down, and then it starts, a lot of it actually sheet flows into this tidal marsh across.
Yeah.
So you do get, like, this whole thing's a tidal marsh, and this is actually connected via pipe to that catch basin and out, so this is like a tidal marsh, so you do get a lot of sheet flow. You can see in a couple of spots where it finds its way and gets in there from the road drainage. But our drainage, the highest point somewhere, ours goes down this way.
Okay. And I know obviously 25 is very high up in the structure, so it won't get wet.
Yeah, we're not, it's not getting onto, it's not getting onto the property, it's staying in the road.
How does 25 get into their house now?
Through that.
Sure, sure.
So this is their garage, this is their house?
So it's not, my question is, is it going to go here?
And this continues this way?
As a share driveway, that's the only potential, maybe.
Yeah.
Do you know if that driveway has any catch basins in it or?
They don't.
No?
No.
So everything does pitch that way anyway?
For that, from this driveway too, yeah. So this all comes down and goes this way as well.
Okay. I bet you if there's a low point, they'll end up doing something.
They'll find it.
They'll find it if there's a puddle, yeah, there's a puddle there freezes in the winter and comes a skating pond.
Yeah.
Maybe they'll fix it.
Bigger pipe?
Yeah. Or just raise the driveway somehow. Okay, we should just note that and send the approval.
Yeah, this has a decent slope up to get into those properties.
Yeah.
I can hear that, Steve. What do you think about depending on the approval?
In the approval, I'll explain again. In the narrative that we're going to write up, we're just going to make sure that there doesn't be, doesn't end up being a ponding at the bottom of 25, the 25's driveway, because the two driveways are kind of close right there. And if it, to George's point, if it goes from 4.6 to 13.9, it's going down seven inches before it gets across the road or down the street. If there's a ponding there, you'll end up fixing that bottom of that driveway somewhere shape before. So we're just going to make sure we put that inside the elevation. And your applicant is not going to care, right?
No.
Because you're not going to end up, I mean, if they start in September, best case scenario, they finish, you know, November, it's not going to freeze until January.
January, right.
Then you're going to see what happens, and you're going to fix it this way. Something like that. So you might have a residual thing you got to take care of.
Yeah.
What about you, sir?
Two questions.
Sure.
One, and they're both about the bridge that kind of is the delineator, I guess, between Tokenique Trail and, is that Acorn?
Is it this bridge here?
On the other side? What's the, what's the other road?
Arrowhead.
Arrowhead, sorry, not Acorn, Arrowhead. The small bridge, right to the east, I guess, or west of this property?
Yeah.
I assume it can handle, I assume the trucks are going to go out that way, because that's the more direct way out, or you're going to have them go all the way around the other way. Do you know which way the trucks will be exiting?
I don't.
The association will weigh in.
Yeah, we can enforce what the association wants.
They would definitely go to Tokenique Trail, it's a better way to go.
Yeah.
It's a hard term. You would find it out in.
That's my, that's what I was getting at.
No, they would go to Tokenique Trail to Old Farm.
To Old Farm and out.
To Old Farm, yeah.
Okay, it's a more meandering route, obviously, but there, then you're not going over the bridge. My concern was that the truck's full of rocks probably might deteriorate that bridge. And then the other question, which also relates to that bridge, because it's pretty close, and since you are doing a lot of blasting, and I know that I can feel blasting from miles away whenever people do do it, is there any sort of agreement you have with the association about the structure of that bridge, you know, just as it relates to potentially shifting during the blasting? Because like back there, right, everything is that ledge.
Right.
Right, so everybody's going to feel that within half a mile easily. And my main concern isn't, you know, obviously direct neighbors, you know, there might be some plumbing issues or foundation, whatever, but that bridge is not built for, you know, tanker trucks to be going over it. It's a small residential auto bridge, right? And I don't know how even how old that bridge is, so my only concern would be maybe a bond for the bridge.
Like a pre-inspection?
Yeah, or some type of inspection about it, so we understand what that bridge looks like.
So they do what's called a pre-blast survey that you've heard of, so they'll go around to the neighbors, take photos, notify them, let them know, you know, all the protocols of the blasting. We'll have them include the bridge.
I was going to say, yeah, because the bridge, I think, falls under the ownership of Tokenique Association. It's not, and you guys, you don't own the road, the property owners don't own the road, so just got to make sure that they're aware of that. That's my main concern, is that would be hard. You know, your neighbor's foundation fix is okay, you two can figure it out and pay somebody that goes away, but how like the association, it's everybody's money, it's a lot more difficult to fix.
Yeah, we could do a pre-blast survey on.
But now, relative to the bridge, make sure I'm following this, that, we're not driving over that bridge, right?
We don't think so, no.
No.
But the blasting might shift the bridge.
The blasting might shift the bridge and hurt its integrity.
Exactly. We don't want to get into another one over at Weaver and over here.
Right, so we can't, we can't request a bond because it's not town property.
That's right, it's private road.
Association will.
With the pay.
Yeah, we'll go through their approval. We'll do something with the association.
Yeah, what I would like to put inside the resolution is suggest that the trucks go out Tokenique Trail.
Out to Old Farm.
Out to Old Farm. We can't enforce it, but we can suggest that.
Certainly suggest it.
Okay.
Right, so that's where you want them to go out?
Yeah. That bridge is small and narrow and.
Do school buses go over it?
Yeah.
They do?
Yeah, but they're not blasting for two months.
Not here. One month.
You know, so though they, we got into this big time on East Lane, because it was a bunch of historical houses, and there's no lawsuits from East Lane's blasting, right? That all went away.
For which project?
David County, some East Lane.
The issue was not the blasting.
Yeah, there was a bunch of antique houses and all that kind of, and people got up and, but they did, nothing ever came of it, so I'm sure these guys will do the same thing. There's not that many blasting companies that serve Fairfield County.
Probably you's the guy who did delegate.
But that's, it makes a great point.
Yeah.
Anything else?
No, that's it. Otherwise, you know, it's fine. I was always wondering how this property would be accessed when we saw the subdivision a couple of years ago, because I believe 25, right, that they're doing, or just finished a big renovation on 25, right? So that thing was under construction for a while.
And they'll be out there for a while longer.
Yeah.
Okay.
I'm good.
You're good?
Guys, cover what I've had.
So the only, the only thing I would, you have to agree to is blasting, it sounds like blasting's between, starts at 9:00 AM and ends at 2:30, and then no.
Last truck.
Yeah, the last truck's got to be finished by, you know, 3:00. The last thing you want is school buses and trucks on those little roads playing cat and mouse.
I'm going to make it 2:45. Buses will be very punctual.
No, they're not. 3:00 will be fine.
As you said, school gets out at 2:55.
School, yeah, school's out at 2:55.
They're not changing school times for 2024, 2025 county.
No, they're not. If anything, they'd be shifting them later, but no, they're not shifting.
Because they want kids to sleep later.
Exactly, yeah.
The Greenwich way of doing life.
Yep. No, it's, it's a half mile from my house and it's a forty-minute, forty-minute bus ride.
But people do that on purpose.
But it is different for middle and high school, though.
They're earlier, so it's easier.
But coming back earlier.
Coming back earlier as well.
We're gonna get to you in a second.
Uh, I don't know.
Two-twenty something, right?
Yeah, when does the high school bus go through there?
Well, we'll, we'll double check, we don't, we don't have to debate that now.
Yeah.
We're just, it's, we got.
We're agreeing to, we're agreeing to off-school hours, yeah.
Right, whatever it is.
Okay.
And then no blasting on weekends.
Right.
It's, it's Monday, you know, during the week, no holidays, we'll be blasting on Thanksgiving.
Hmm.
You know, um, and I think that's it. You said two, probably two months, a hundred trucks. Um, how many trucks a day do you think that is?
Can't imagine more than ten a day, max.
More than ten a day, it's like more than one an hour. A lot more than that, okay. Um, would anybody in the general public like to speak to this application?
Uh, yeah.
Jeff, just come up to the podium if you don't mind.
Oh, sure.
Yeah. And for the record, just tell everybody your name and affiliation.
Jack DeVita, Vice President of the Association and Chair of the Development Committee. Um, I just wanna.
The Token Eek Association.
Um, let them know that, uh, the association requires pre-approval to get a driveway cut, so this is something surprised that they didn't come to us, because we don't have to grant to do driveway cut. We don't do it in cases of extreme hardship. Um, so, uh, yeah, kinda late, that's a little bit of a faux pas. Uh, and then secondly, they, they access the property through twenty-five now.
Correct.
Where they have a permanent right-of-way?
That, it, that does not show up on.
Shared agreement.
Or shared agreement, it's a shared driveway?
It says twelve-foot right-of-way, reference map, um, thirty-three-twenty-two DLR, whatever that means. During.
So I guess they don't like, but I'm wondering what problem they're solving? Because they have access to the home through a right-of-way, and we wanna go through all this other stuff and flood damage mitigation. I, I don't see any hardship to, to, to grant them either a new driveway cut or why.
So you, your, what your point is that you may not grant the, the.
Yeah.
You don't know.
We, we, I, yeah, we don't know.
Right. It hasn't been.
So, and, and we, we, we have requested, had requested for other driveway cuts and turned them down for a variety of reasons.
Right.
So we do it for cases of extreme hardship and.
So this property owner has requested a driveway cut from your association?
No, no, other, other, other properties have. They, they, this is, uh, they have requested, nothing, they have told us nothing.
Okay, that's something the applicant should know.
Yeah, but not, not for our regulations.
Yeah, we can't, we can't enforce it, it, it's, we don't, like, whenever anybody else comes in a ra- in a ra- town, we, we will grant the driveway, but they have to go to Public Works after the fact and get the access. If Public Works says no, then we wasted our time.
Right, okay.
Yeah.
And then, so, so this is, this is just a, not a variance, this is just a regular.
It's a cut-and-fill application.
Cut-and-fill application, so there's, okay.
Right, so we don't get into hardships or any of that stuff. Somebody wants to put a driveway, you can't, you really, in our town, now, you can't get two driveways. There's, um, there's really no circular driveways on most roads.
Yeah, there has to be a separation distance on a public road, a town road, uh, I think it's fifty feet between. So some people, if you have a big enough property with a lot of frontage, you can get it, circular driveway, other people.
Like a lawn incline or something like that. Okay. Um, do you have any comment on hours of operation or number of trucks?
I was happy that would, I happen to also live across the street by coincidence, uh, so I was happy that it was not gonna start until September, so.
Right.
Because, uh.
Well, your kids are in college, right?
Yeah. But that's my goal. I don't wanna hear it all day, so September, but yeah, no, I, he was, you, um.
George, George and Adam.
Oh, yeah, uh, you were right about the bus, they come by, so yeah, that is what it is, nine to three or whatever, however you guys just described it. That sounds reasonable, and seriously, no, association would prohibit work done outside of those hours and certainly on weekends and holidays, which you're already prepared for.
Okay, all right, cool.
Um, since there's some, anything else you wanna send in?
We're, we're gonna close the hearing tonight, but if there's anything else you come up with, you can just email us. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jeff. Um, we're good, we're good? Did I miss anything? Um, do you have any other comments, anything before we close?
No, we're good, I, we know we need to go to the association, this was just one of the stops along the way.
Right, exactly. Stops along the way, baby. All right, thank you. All right, with that said, intermission, closing the hearing. Adam makes a motion, Amy makes a second, all in favor? Five, nothing, hearing's closed.
Thank you.
Thank you. Um, when do we, when do we?
We deliberate tonight and try to get, uh, some kind of vote by the commission in July, one of the July meetings.
Okay, okay.
July, or late June, rather.
Yeah, so you got, you guys still gotta tape where your contract is in the left and go after the bird.
Gotta be an association.
Yeah, you gotta play, nice, nice association. Thanks, Ben. Okay, that's the end of the public hearing. Now we're gonna go into the general meeting. The first item on the general deliberations are possible, um, decisions regarding the following. The first item is special permit application number sixty-five A's in Apple landfill regaining application number five-seventy-two P L twenty-four dash fifty-three, town of Darien, Rhode Heights Fire Department at two-oh-nine Eroton Avenue, propose to demolish an existing wooden retaining wall and construct a new concrete replacement wall on the southeast portion of the property and perform related site development activities. Um, in your packet, we got a draft resolution on this application. Um, I was not, um, in attendance at the meeting, but I read the, um, all of the, the resolution and whatnot. Um, any typos, scrivners, errors, um, on this one before we go any further? Um, it looks like it's pretty straightforward. They're just building a new wall in front of the existing wall, making, I guess, a couple parking spaces in the front wider. Um, I didn't see anything in here that jumped off the page that was out of whack, and I didn't see any typos either. Um, there's no performance bond, um, that, that got waived because it's all internal. Um, I think it is important to make sure that they do the silt fencing and all that. There's been a his- history of, um, flooding and whatnot down that road and icing of the road down in Maguon Field. So that's gotta be watched on that. Um, anything else that jumped out at me? Nope, that's it. And then obviously an as-built survey at the end. Any changes, questions, anything?
Looking here.
Motion to approve as submitted, Amy makes a motion, looking for a second. Adam makes, George makes a second.
No, I don't care.
All those in favor? Um, I wanna say four to, four to zero to one. I don't know what to say, because I didn't, um, wasn't that the.
I wasn't at the meet either, but I did watch the recording.
Fantastic.
That counts.
That counts. I didn't, I didn't watch it on TV. Sorry. Um, next item on the agenda is landfill regaining application number five-seventy-nine P L twenty-four dash forty-two, Jason and Lauren, uh, Veno at seventy Eroton Avenue, propose to construct a new stone retaining wall and to regrade the rear of the property to create a more level yard and perform related site development activities. Sounds like they made the lacrosse field, uh, soccer field, it's gonna be nice. Um, in your app, in your packets or in your documents, you got a resolution dated today. Um, there were two typos in here, um, just to catch on it. One's on page two, um, item number three. The work may or may not, uh, be done as part of this version, uh, may or may not be done.
Good catch.
Okay, and the other one, um, Vice Chairman Adam got, um, the bottom of page three, in E as in Edward, this store board of management report, I think we got that this afternoon.
Yep.
Okay, any other typos, scrivners, errors, comments on this one? This, again, I guess, I think this is an after the fact.
After the fact, yeah.
Yeah.
Application, um. Uh, was there anything else on here that I saw? No, everything else was pretty straightforward.
And the only other thing, we are definitely referencing the civil engineering plans, the dated ones that are the fourteenth, right? Because those are the ones that satisfied the neighbor.
Right, the revised May fourteenth. Yes, good catch.
All right. I think that is, it is correct, I think last revised the fourteenth. Yep, okay, I just wanted to make sure. Okay?
What item was that, is that item number seven?
Condition A.
Condition A.
A condition A. Got it. Uh, last Friday, my fourteen.
Yep.
With that said, intermission to approve, I think Amy just made the motion.
Yep.
Looking for a second. Uh, Jamie makes a second, all in favor? Four to zero to one, okay? That one's done. Next item up for bid, landfill regaining application number five-seventy-one P L twenty-four dash forty-six, Oscar and Allison Picas, um, at fifty Holly, Holly Lane, propose to fill and regrade in association with the construction of a new pool patio area and a pool house, expansion of the driveway, retaining wells, and perform related site development activities, installation of stormwater management. In your packet, um, there's a draft resolution dated today, June fourth. A, um, question to comment, typos, scrivners, errors on this one? On those, that's good. Um, it seems that we got some comments from the people next door at forty-four Holly Lane that was satisfied. Um, they adhered to the two-year and fifty-year storm. Um, this thing's already gone to construction, right? This one you come out of high school, left hand side?
Yeah, this is, exactly, this is the house that's, they're being renovated, but the work here is for the pool and the associated drainage, which is being elevated, and the fill extended right to the eastern property line with some retaining walls.
And, and Holly Lane's a private road on that section too?
Yeah, Holly Lane is one of the unique roads in town that's part public, part private. So I believe this is the private section, but I could be wrong.
I have in my notes that the gentleman offered to meet with the neighbor to, to explain a little bit further. We have not heard any, with, this hearing was closed, but we've not heard anything further since that one neighbor, uh, the one at forty-four Holly, who was most concerned about the sump pump drainage and, um, you know, there was back and forth about could it go in the front and, and how it was just gonna naturally go to that, to that swale wet spot in the back, and that was not really gonna change, it was still gonna drain to that area.
So is number two correct in what it says?
I, I just wanna, I'm just gonna have to check number two.
It says the possible effect on forty-four, those.
Yeah.
Those concerns were addressed by the applicant representative at the public hearing.
I have in my notes here that the land tech offered to meet with the neighbor and explain. And I, I, I don't recall that there was any outstanding, because I usually have my notes put notation when I hit something that I wanna make sure I close the loop on when we deliberate.
Right.
And I'm just asking anybody else if that rings a bell to anybody. I think that was closed, that circle was closed, and there's no additional outstanding items. We have not heard anything more from this neighbor.
We have not, no.
Okay, great.
And we didn't move any sump pumps or anything?
Yeah, okay.
It is where it is, it's, it didn't get moved.
Okay, and I'm, I'm fine.
Okay. All right, with that said, anything else from anybody else? No? Okay, with that said, um, entertain a motion to approve, I've submitted. Adam makes a motion, I think George made the second.
Yep.
Yep, all in favor? Four to zero to one? Great, thank you. All right, next item on the agenda, um, twenty-twenty-six planner conservation development discussion of upcoming update on the twenty-sixteen plan. We call it update of the twenty-sixteen, or is it supposed to be standalone?
Well, I think that the, uh, state statute chooses the wording update.
Oh, do they really?
What they really mean is.
Pretty much.
Brand-new, fresh. Yeah, because what they do is the, in the interim ten years, they change the regulations in terms of what a town plan needs to cover.
Right.
They always keep making it needs to cover this and this, more and more and more. So in essence, while, and we can see from our memo, a lot of the twenty-sixteen plan probably still applies.
Right.
There's a need for updating relative to things that have changed in the past ten years, relative to what section eight dash twenty-three of the statutes requires more on resiliency, uh, environmental friendliness, preservation of Long Island sound, but also updating it relative to changes that we've had here in Darien, the purchase of Great Island, some other local things, and the fact that it's likely to segue nicely into the affordable housing plan. So a lot of the things that will be covered in here likely will be a more extensive housing chapter to try to hit those issues as well.
So in, in our, in our packets, we got a memo from, um, Fred and Jeremy explaining about what we're doing here, just to get us familiar with what's going on in the old P O C D that everybody has read and sleeps next to their coffee table and, and, and puts it under their pillow.
I make my kids read it.
Yeah. Some, yeah, some of the things I think he, that these guys highlighted in, in bullet points or land use and the different economic job and whatnot. Um, it, you have to help me out a little bit, is the econ- is the economic development, is that part of the plan? Yeah, we wanna, we wanna, you know, we wanna, um, promote development, but, you know, do you get into the, into, deep into the woods? And there was also something in here, I thought it was about, you know, socio-economic stuff that we're gonna, we supposed to get into that stuff now?
Well, I think a lot of it is.
Fostering inclusiveness and social cohesion, I mean, that, does that fall into?
I think one of the main questions when the consultant, when the consultant selected or meets with you, if we have a number of interviews, for example, is what of the existing plan does the commission like? Hey, this is great, let's run it through, run it forward. Are there things in the town plan you're like, oh, that needs, that, those types of issues need to be addressed? Are there gaps, things you guys, yeah, we really need to dig deeper, more into, and having looked at a number of town plans, some get more into downtown form. What should it look like in terms of pedestrian friendliness, minimizing curb cuts, shared parking, that type of thing, drilling down into design, height setbacks, kind of what look and feel. Uh, some is more policy, you know, what are the policies that we've talked a lot about? Uh, right, did you talk about the frost and the snowman walk? How can we make downtown more user-friendly? Outdoor dining's been a big thing that's changed through the years. Thirty years ago, it wasn't really a thing. Now, almost every restaurant has to find a way to make that work as part of what they're doing, and it really adds something. So those types of things that have changed over the years is important. How, how is the town going to grow? Nope, if there's zoning changes you think are warranted in the future? Because again, every time someone comes with a zone change proposal, has to be consistent with the town plan. And so conversely, if there's things you're like, no, we shouldn't change these things in the future. It's important, for example, for the town to have a, let's give an example, a service business zone, where we have things like car dealers and lawnmower repairmen, that's an important part of Darien. And if we were to change that, that kind of changes the whole dynamic.
Everybody becomes grandfather.
Right, and, or keeping the retail to certain areas in the downtown in Eroton Heights and not letting it spread up and down Route One from the Stanford line to the Norwalk line, just non-stop shops. Those types of big policy pictures. We talked about housing, what are we gonna, recently, the commissions made changes, accessory dwelling units, those types of things, so.
That was, unfolds of diversified housing. After last ten years ago plan, in that plan, we did talk about changing zonings and looking at the whole zoning code holistically. We also made a reference to looking at the, um, whole signage thing holistically. And that was all offshoots of the plan. The thing that I kinda sorta liked about this, and maybe that's the thing we can do at a working group meeting, is, um, there's, in the back of it, there's an action plan where this is what you're supposed to do, and these are the ones you do it and, and see what happens. And we did that once before, there was a bunch of piece of property that, you know, the, the plan suggested that the town buy, which was, one is the house that's over at, um.
Home School.
Um, Home School, and the other one was the house that was next to Wee Beach.
Yes, sure.
That little one, that was on the list. And I, I bet you that list now is there's nothing left on it for us to buy that we suggested.
Is this also an appropriate time to take stock of all the development that has happened recently in a holistic view to say, okay, how much more of this do we need to pump the brakes and, and digest what we've done?
I think.
Is this part of this conversation where that's an appropriate thing for us to pop our heads up and say, okay, there's some, some major projects that have been, that have happened since the last plan, uh, town conservation and development has been done. What are we, how do we feel about this? And what's left that we can take on, or do we hit the pause button? What are we, what are we doing?
Right, because I'm, I'm gonna get into that a, a tiny bit in the championship report, not really, not totally, but in the last three years, we've added, I'm gonna say for round figures, two-hundred units to town. There's another five-hundred in the pipeline, right? At certain points in time, it, it's an offshoot of this, you're gonna, you're gonna run out of capacity.
Yeah.
Either fire department, police department, EMS.
Schools.
Traffic, sewer, schools, I mean, and, and you can sit there and talk about, and I'm, me personally, now I'm the perfect example. You know, because, because you're building multi-family housing, doesn't mean you're bringing in kids.[1788.22] I mean, there's only, I think, six kids in, there's only like six kids inside Darien Commons. I think there's zero over at Corbin, right? But me, if I moved from, from my house into Darien Commons or Corbin or the Heights Crossing, I got a house that's got four kids in it. Somebody's going to buy my house in two seconds, and they're going to, you better buy my house in two seconds. And they're going to fill it with four kids. So they may not be in the new apartment buildings, but they're going to be in the place that you vacated.
Did you say five hundred new residential units in the pipeline? Beyond what's already been approved?
No, including some that are approved. If you include, if you include Thorne Dale, you include Palmer's, you include.
Is there anything we don't know?
You include. What's that?
Anything brewing at this point?
Well, the pre-applications that we had were sixteen, what, eighteen units, or eighteen units at the other one. Dossetti's got sixteen on Squab Lane. There's a new one that we're going to probably see, there's a piece of land that's the old realty building, that one. Realty of one oh six and another one.
Parklands may not get happen, like some things may not come to fruition.
If you, I added them all up on a piece of paper once. And it's, there's nothing that, there's nothing that's secret out there that we don't know about. But if you add them all up, it's like five hundred.
Basically, over the last five years, really, since the plan was first done.
Correct. And, you know, it's going to take for those things to come online to Amy's point. You got us, we're not, I don't think we're allowed to say no more development.
No, and I'm not, I'm just saying, is it, is this the forum under which we say, you know, how are we feeling about what we've done?
I, I think the offshoot of something like this is going to be a capacity issue. And say, you know, is there more, if all this stuff gets approved, do they have to add five more fire depart, you know, five more fire trucks or five more this or more police?
But how do we get an understanding of the different areas where we look at capacity? So I guess that's a bigger.
Right, because there is a lot of, there is a lot of items that fall into capacity. I mean, on last Friday, something happened on I ninety-five, my phone blew up with the traffic. And I guess it's taking me twenty minutes to get from one end to the other end of town, you know, stop building housing. You know, it's four o'clock on Friday, I'm like, hey, I want to go out drinking, I want to do happy hour myself. You know, but it's, you get.
That was, that was the one topic I did want to raise and for consideration in this is traffic.
Yeah.
We haven't seen the impact yet, I'm very concerned about it. We've seen some impact, I think, on Heights Road, which could be pretty tough to back out into nowadays. But anyway, just, I think it's good to brew as a.
I've said, I think there's going to be a traffic light or a traffic stop at, on Edgerton on Heights Road someday. I've been saying that for years, I'm one of those four things. But we've kept our eye going to the other end of town where you're broaching the Norwalk border. We've kept our eye on the targets of the world and the Costco expanding and what's the grocery store that's going at Wegmans.
Segments?
We can't do much about that. There's nothing we can do, you know, but it's going, it's going to affect us. So maybe that's something we do. I do think you're definitely going to need a whole dedicated section to Great Island. It might be, it might be blank, it might be a page and a half or a half a page.
Yeah, and they're working on their own separate master plan. And I know there's other things, and Fred is working on the R F P to go out to consultants, and he's identified numerous plans that are recently completed by the town for Parks and Rec and other agencies. And one of the things to talk about is Great Island. So as background for whatever consultant gets hired by the commission, hey, here's a whole bunch of stuff going on, familiarize yourself with the town. Usually what will happen is, will Fred and I'll drive the consultant around and say, okay, here we are down in Tokene, here's some of the concerns. Here we are at Wee Beach, here's some of the, and just drive them to different parts of town and say, here's the issues, concerns, here's what the commission's likely to bring up down in Norman Heights with the train station. You got this, you got this, and get them familiar with what's going on.
Now, one of the items that you put on here, economic development, identify policy that will attract business, support local entrepreneurs, create jobs, and consider barriers to economic growth. One of the items that I always put on that list is red tape, is cutting red tape. I think in the last five years, actually less than that, in the last three years instead of a COVID, all the stuff that we do went online, you know, and that's, that's thanks to you and staff and open gov and all that good stuff. But, you know, the red tape got cut down. If we want to get into a section of, you know, streamlining town hall or streamlining, you're in charge of land use. So you've got six hats, you're covering all kinds of people. I know the first selectman reached out to me and said, you know, some of these boards and commissions in town are repetitive. You know, you have to go to A R B, you have to go to P and Z, you have to go to Public Works, you got to go to, you know, architects, you got to go to the zoning board of appeals to get, you know, a shed built and all that kind of stuff. Do you want to streamline that? Do you want to have something like that?
Well, I know, one of the things that we're working on, which should be on the town website or before the end of the month, is guidance for people that want to open a restaurant, for example. You know, you can imagine it needs multiple approvals, health department, fire marshal, maybe the building official if you're doing some internal renovations, planning and zoning, maybe A R B. So it's a, we're trying to give people the information upfront versus they're about to open and they're missing a step or unaware of what the process is. So a lot more of that going on, a lot more. Fred and I are meeting next week with the restaurateur, we're going to sit down with health, fire, building. One room, one time, you get all of us, okay, you want to open a restaurant? Where is it, how are we going to do it? What are the, what's the path, the process, if you will? So more user-friendly.
That's a perfect example, you mean, it's more like a simple restaurant?
I should put in a plug here, a note for future consideration about the development of bike review.
Yes.
Of what?
Bike review.
Oh, okay.
We've got staff now working on it and.
You have one or two, oh, you have one and a half?
Staff, basically half, actually.
You have half, okay.
But it's busy, it seems to be growing in terms of concern. We've added commercial to it, and so something that.
I think that's a change in the past ten years, no doubt about it.
Seventeen, I think, was the statute, the ordinance, so, anyway, yeah, just.
Yeah, you say, well, not much has happened, and then you start, well, this and this, and you're like, yeah, a lot happens in ten years. And that's why the state says you really need to start thinking about it. And that we can say, hey, here's the direction the town's been taking, here's points of emphasis, if you will, and where do we see the next ten years leading us?
So that's, that's the stuff, what we're talking about now, and we're all talking about it, and he's put out here. That's the stuff that you got to kind of come up at the beginning as an outline. And say, put a section on that, put in a section on that, and then the consultant does what the consultant does. I guess you could, I guess you can make, you know, a change midstream if you had to. It's never done until it's done. So also, if you come up and they're already into it for two months, oh, you know, we should add something like that. Like, the one thing I kept pushing Alaska around, and I don't think anything had happened, was I was one of the bike lanes in a bike tram in town. And I never got any traction on it just because they're all over the country for recreation. But in our town, you see those guys whipping down Hollow Tree Ridge Road, you know, going from the high school. And I think they even blocked them from being at the Coon Slat, they used to park at the Coon Slat. And then all the bikes would get there, and now it's like no bikes. And now I think they started like middle sex school.
Yeah, middle sex school and New Rothen Heights train station as well.
Yeah, I mean, those guys just haul, and it's fun watching them.
Kind of backwards a little, because I think there used to be stripes on near water land and maybe rings in.
Really?
For, yeah, maybe going back twenty years, I suppose, but.
But they did, they did it all over Stanford, and they striped it, they striped, you know, the hell out of the roads. And it's, it looks like a jigsaw puzzle, you can't.
It's somewhat confusing.
On the way to Costco in the back room, you don't have to light your strip.
It's a little confusing, but I'm not on a bike, so.
There has been some talk about developing.
You're a big biker, right?
Developing bike lanes and bike travel in conjunction with New Canaan relative to a bicycle master plan that was worked on by Westco. So there's been some, there's been some back and forth on that and that, you know, that could certainly be, you know, one thing that gets explored further.
The town that I grew up in in Pennsylvania has these large high-tension wires that, you know, cut through multiple municipalities, and all of the municipalities have gotten together and created like, almost like a high line in New York City where it's, it is this pedestrian-friendly underneath that just people can go for, for long, long walks. But, and biking, but anyway, different, different setting.
But I think that's to your point, you know, if there's, if there's a bike lane in New Canaan, there's a bike lane in Darien, and there's my house in the middle, buy my house and connect the two. You know, that's what I would do, you know.
There's an issue with Hoyt Street, I don't remember what it is, but apparently there's an issue, and maybe it's too narrow or three or something wrong with it.
Yeah, there was the issue on Upper Hoyt Street where that woman, years and years, you'd go on the sidewalks so she could walk to the Tokene, whatever that town.
Town.
You know, and that never got any traction, it was too expensive. You can always put it in the plan, and the best part about the plan is, you know, we can say, do this, this, and this, and it might cost a trillion dollars, we don't really care, it doesn't matter. The only thing I would like to do is, it got controversial last go-around with the plan. We did this, some kind of, some artist came up with what downtown's going to look like in twenty fifty, and people just blew a gasket. No, you can't do that, they stopped parking garages like in, all over the place. Like, there was a huge, like, full of parking garage, and we were like, pull it out, Susan was not happy. Anything else?
No, so we're going to keep tracking down, putting together an R F P, try to get some consultants with the goal of having consultants put proposals together for the commission to review. We'll hope in July, August, but we think it's probably run to, you think, September, Fred?
Yeah, the initial goal is to get the R F P out sometime later this month, later in June. And then have potential firms respond to that R F P later this summer, July, August. And then potentially, the commission would interview a handful of consultants, one, two, three groups.
We interviewed three last go-around, but like six people responded. And just also as a point of reference, this consultant, they get paid like six figures. It's, it's a lot of money, you know, we're not talking.
They just approved a million four for the Great Island consultation.
Not a million four, it's something.
That's after some discounts.
But, you know, the guy gets paid a lot, but I can tell you, Glenn Chalder, he was here for what, twelve months?
Oh, more than, it's two years. And there's a lot of behind-the-scenes meetings, we had him, I think, sitting in, somewhere in town hall, meeting with people. As I said, Fred and I would drive him around at certain points and say, okay, here we are here, here's the issues related to this, a lot of research to get up to speed.
That guy put his heart and soul into it, and he's retired. He's not doing any, or taking on new business, but he was, he took it, he took it personally, and he was a smart dude. Okay, anything else on this one?
I think that wraps it up for now. You know, it's, the P O C D is really just a vision for the town over the next ten years. So, you know, as you're just driving around, traveling, and just keep this in the back of your mind and, you know, write things down, you know, just make note of, of, you know, some of the changes that you'd like to see come down the pike as, as this plan gets developed. And, you know, as we move forward with this R F P process, you know, we hopefully would anticipate getting started in the actual planning process and, you know, the October, November timeframe, which would give the commission, you know, a solid eighteen to twenty months to, you know, to develop the plan, to, you know, to bring in public comment from the community, which is, which is of course going to be a big part of the development of the plan as well.
When's it due, July twenty-six?
Yeah, about there, spring of twenty-six, May, June. And usually you need a couple of months to finalize it, put up notice of public hearing.
That's what I'm saying, we need six months of, or four months at least of, you know, it's already mostly ninety-eight percent done, start the public hearing, maybe you make a couple of tweaks here and there, but you're not, you don't want to be halfway done in, in January of twenty-six.
No, the public hearing's at the beginning.
Well, what we usually do is have public outreach at the start, hey, input, feedback, and that will really depend on the consultant.
Right.
But at the end, you have a public hearing on the draft document and say, okay, people, what do you think? If all goes well, most people are familiar with it, they're comfortable with it, and the public hearing becomes a non-event because most people have heard about the plan and it's nothing new or different to them.
The last two comments, I want to just put out, there's two things. One, some plans across the state, and there's what, a hundred and fifty-nine states with them. Some are really thick plans, like, you know, two, three inches, and other ones are really thin, small. I don't say anything. There's also, if you do, if you feel like looking them up, you know, and you see one that was done by a consultant, you think it's really cool, make sure that guy's name is in the mix, but they have one that's really stinks, you know, keep that guy out of it. Two things that's also to add to it, the, where the Corbin district was built, it was being built now, which is the Corbin block, that was in the nineteen fifty-nine plan of conservation development.
I had to redevelop that one?
It was, there's a thing called, David's putting a thing called Market Street, and it might be Penny Lane or something like that, but that plan, that street was put in in nineteen fifty-nine. And then the Rothen Heights, that whole super block, that was from the two thousand and six plan. Because that, that Rothen Heights overlay was done, I think, two years before Fred Conzie left. And Fred Conzie's been gone since over ten years. So that's twelve years ago, so it's not.
From the chairmanship.
Yeah, well, no, from the commission, I think he's only commissioned twenty years, but he retired ten years ago, or twelve years ago. But anyway, I mean, it may make it into a plan, and, and, you know, you may not ever see it come fruition, but someday when you come back, you know, with your grandkids, you know, you're like, hey, we approved that in twenty-two, twenty-seven or something. Okay, we beat that with the dead rate. Any questions, send them on in or email or text, what we're going to do. The next set of approval minutes, we have two sets of minutes to go over real quick. May seventh, I was not at either of these two meetings, shocking, like, he probably won the cross game and lost the cross game. But the first time, here's a public hearing about Coach Lamp. There was another public hearing on Rothen Avenue, and there was another public hearing on Holly Lane. We did the mandatory referral of Thorne Dale Circle, then we have a resolution from May seventh. And it's another item, there's another resolution from May seventh on Thorne Dale Circle, so we can't change that. There's another resolution on Old Stone Road, so we can't change that. And then I think at the end, there was a couple of quick items. There's another resolution for, for ten, that's the Hanson Road Bridge over at Weaver. And then there was no, we did deliberations and whatnot. Ready, questions, comments, typos, scrims, errors in this thing? Did we catch anything?
Nope.
No, okay. Then with that said, entertain a motion to approve as submitted. Amy makes a motion, looking for a second, Adam makes a second, all's in favor, four to zero to one. I would abstain. Second set of minutes, there's another meeting for May fourteenth. There's a continuation of the fifty Coach Lamp that was on here, but that was withdrawn. The special permit on the Rothen Heights Fire Department that we have, and the continuation of seventy, the Rothen Avenue again. Special permit from Oxford Riding Thug on what they wanted to do. Mandatory referral, I guess, was approved for Thorne Dale Circle. But that was the report, then you have a resolution for the Board of Education, with a mandatory referral approval. What else we got? Deliberations on twenty-nine Highview Avenue, and with a resolution on twenty-nine Highview Avenue, can't change the resolution. Review of two twenty-four Long Neck Point Road, a resolution on two twenty-four Long Neck Point Road. And I think that's it, and a resolution on something else on Rothen Avenue, deliberations for those. And then some that Jeremy did. Questions, comments, typos, scrims? Questions, comments, typos, scrivners on this one?
Nope.
Can you use a whistle? Motion to approve. Uh, Adam makes a motion, looking for a second. Jamie made the second, the Siri Angler, all in favor, four to zero to one. Okay, those two things are down. What else we got on here? Chairman's report, um.
Do we want to do any deliberations for a chairman's report?
Uh, that's not on here.
We could do it under business.
Other business, yeah. Chairman's report, the only thing that I want to add to, there are a bunch of, I want to say, smaller, high prior, high profile properties that are on the market for sale or coming to the market for sale in the commercial districts. Um, so to Amy's point about, you know, think that stuff is going to stop or slow down. We probably know about most of the big ones. Um, I think there's some small ones that could become up big that's in the future. The one I keep saying that, but nothing's happened with is the Wells Fargo Bank Branch that's in town. That's got, the, the pricing's out of whack and the land is there. The one in downtown.
Yep.
Next to, right next to. The Rego's now.
Yep, um, so that one's, nothing's coming of that, but something, something will pop eventually.
Yep.
Um, I'd, I'd, I'd like to know what's going to happen with the old, um, bell cleaners at Subway.
They took the building down, but have not submitted any plans to redevelop.
Yeah, that, that, they dug down to China and I think they're pretty much finished.
Dumped out to China.
Dug, dug down to China.
Oh, dug down to China.
That was, it was like a super front site.
I knew, I knew, okay, yeah.
Who said, who said it all the time? It's at the beach.
The Goonies too.
Right. Um, so something's going to, something's going to happen there. Um, there's a, there's two or three other pieces of property that are on the market for sale on the post road again going, um, I call it north, but it's really east from downtown that are on the market for sale on either side of the street. Um, like little office buildings and, and it's been out there for, the League of Women Voters, is it League of Women Voters?
Junior League.
Junior League. That thing's on the market.
And there's one right in the middle of downtown where Doctors and Browski used to be. It's on the south side of the street across from, um, Diane Brown's place. Same side of the street as Heights Pizza.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
The White, the White House.
Oh, yeah.
So stuff, I mean, there's, we're, we're, I don't think, I mean, right now, we're, seems like we're kind of in a slow period, but there's stuff percolating back there. So just keep your eye on it and, and, you know, see what happens if you hear anything. It's, it's always nice, nicer, in my opinion, to be in front of it than being behind it and, and having it come out there. Um, because to be honest with you, certain people think because of the price that they, that they want for it, you have to be able to build, you know, the next Taj Mahal. Um, and that's the, that's the case with Wells Fargo.
All right.
Yeah, I mean, that's, the economics just don't work. Um, I think that's the things that, next week, I'm not going to be here because there's the lacrosse team, that's important, that should be on the record. The lacrosse team, we've got a big lacrosse game tomorrow during the semifinals against New Canaan, which is, you know, the home of our esteemed associate director. Um, we play in Greenwich tomorrow night, or tomorrow afternoon, four o'clock. Um, and then.
Which league?
Um, that is the Class Double L Varsity Lacrosse Team.
State.
Yeah, state championships. Yeah, the, 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 the team lost to the, um, Staples in the, in the county championship game. Um, but we'll see what happens.
So they're not going to move to the lacrosse games to avoid P and Z?
No, that's right. Well, no, they did, they moved it to Wednesday.
Say, where are they playing? It shouldn't be under lights, right?
They moved the lacrosse.
Make an emergency resolution.
If we could meet by Zoom, you could do both at the same time.
No, I'm, I'm a little bit louder at the lacrosse games, not much louder, but I'm a little bit louder than the lacrosse games and meetings here. Um, I think that's it, and just to add, um, next week, I think is kind of important. Um, there's the hearing, a public hearing on the cannabis, which they blasted out on, um, Instagram and other, um, social media outlets, um, asking for a public input. I don't know if you've got anything to date or.
Not yet.
And it goes, I did meet, I did see, um, Marley.
Marley Hayes, Communication.
Marley Hayes the other day at, at an event and she's in charge of all that stuff. So maybe if you respond to that, maybe the, the response is going to that. If you hit return on, on Instagram, maybe it goes to her.
Yeah, I'll talk to her about it, make sure we get, you know, what we really want is people to come to the hearing. Let us know. I did, uh, reach out to the new police chief. I know the prior police chief, Don Anderson, had some very specific thoughts. Uh, but Jerry Maron's the new chief, so I spoke to him today. I also emailed the proposal to the entire police commission and others, department ads and town and for input, feedback. The hearing is next week, we'll see how it goes.
Yeah, I, I would be, it would be great if either the police chief and/or chairman or one of the commissioners, police commissioner, come and just chime in. Um, this, we talked about this a bunch, a bunch of different times and I've said it before. The, the, the police department going two or three chiefs ago wasn't really super happy about it when cannabis reg, regulation was passed because it is a non-banking, um, product. So it means there's got to be a lot of cash around. Um, but in the professional manner that, that most of police departments are is, you know, if it does get approved or one does show up, they will protect it the same way they protect the jewelry store. Um, you know, that's, that's their job. Uh, but if, though, if you invite those guys, that would be great.
Get the word out on the streets about these hearings.
And the same thing about the other. Um, I'm kind of sad I'm going to miss it, but I'm sure you'll, you'll do just fine. Um, that's kind of it for me, if anyone has any questions, I'm always here. Um, anything on the director's report, sir?
Sure, Fred and I are going to be speaking tomorrow with the Board of Realtors about accessory dwelling units.
Thank you, guys.
Sure thing. Uh, Monica McNally is speaking, she's the.
Great Island.
Great Island part of the meeting and then we're going to talk about ADUs. We have met with three or four people already who are, have shown interest. Uh, and as Steve suggested, we're going to keep a chart of what the proposal is, whether it meets the regs, whether it doesn't, and if there's anything that's, I'll call it standing in the way or conditions that continue to be, and that way the commission's aware of, hey, here's what people are able to meet, here's what's prohibiting them from going forward, and that should be helpful. So we've had a number of inquiries. We already have one person who's lining up to come before the commission in July or September for a proposal, so. So we'll see how that goes. Uh, I'm also speaking tomorrow afternoon at Atria to, they invited me to speak about Darien generally, so.
Say hi to my wife.
I will, when she's, yeah, so.
She'll be there, I'll show you a picture in the morning. Germany, you're the lunch.
And, uh, that's, anything else, Fred?
I don't think so.
That's cool, dude. Just, just for the record, I've never been invited to speak at Atria. Everybody knows.
That's because your wife works there.
She wrapped up the salad.
Check out, we'll, we'll know all that.
Get back to work.
We, we also anticipate that we'll be doing, uh, ADU outreach meeting at the Darien Library in the coming weeks as well, so.
We just have to get a date selected by library, but they've asked.
That's great, yeah. I mean, there's, there's, there is a little bit of discussion about ADUs and type people that I've spoken to think they love the idea. Um, but then every once in a while, I get into the economics of it and how much it costs to add a bathroom and a kitchen and that their tax bill's going to go up, and they're like, you didn't tell me that. I'm like, okay, what are you thinking? Kitchen and bathroom is free? And they're like, wow, really? Um, next upcoming meetings are July 11th and 25th. We just talked about July 11th, anything special, June 11th, anything special on 25th?
We have some, uh, I'll call it the Great Island, Long Neck Point. So the person who bought the adjacent property, the former Ziegler property, the big barn that you've driven, altered in the past thousands of times. Wants to add on to the barn and kind of spruce up the property, redevelop the property, if you will.
Does he have enough acreage?
Yeah. And certainly that's one, one of the two S's. And the other application's related to that is a, I'll call it a planting, screening, landscaping plan for a number of properties that this person bought as well. So it's, I think they're both coming on the 25th, Fred, both of those?
Yep, and then some other miscellaneous public.
Some miscellaneous docs and some other things. Then we're, starting in late, in July, we're going to start seeing, uh, the Thorndale Circle rezoning. We're going to see the car wash at former Bertucci's again. Um, we're going to see David Genovese as a proposal to take the farm that's downtown, I'll call it Eric Houston's Farm, redevelop it into a.
It's not a farm, it's a garden.
A garden.
They grow tomatoes there.
So you'll see that in July as well.
Oh, on, on Oakdale South?
Yeah.
For a dog park?
Well, what, what he's going to do, the proposal right now is, he realizes that he's, you know, taken away a lot of overflow parking with that redevelopment.
Yep.
So it's really in an effort to, you know what? We could use a little overflow parking for some of my tenants, try to get them out of that center street area.
Ah, okay.
Kind of free it up.
Yep.
Build it for now for, I think he said, two years plus or minus. Then Corbin Phase Two will be done and then.
Got it.
Dog park, field, whatever he's going to do. But it's really a, kind of relieve some of the strain on that center street parking lot.
Moving tech, moving tech chairs around.
Yep.
So it could be to accommodate all those that, I hate to be the bearer of bad news, we may have to add a meeting in July to try to get through as much as possible.
Okay. We never had a meeting on the 18th, it's not in our schedule, so we didn't cancel.
We're not going to meet on June 18th.
It's a break from, well, and it's a week's school, so.
Yeah, July 18th, yes, yeah.
First week, no school.
Yeah.
Also likely to see Tesla car chargers at Goodwives Shopping Center later in July, July as well.
And they have what, five now? There, there, three, they have three there now?
There's a different brand there that's on, called the Odelese 70 Bank End. They're proposing it for the, uh, what, Andrew Stefano Salon and the, all the way at the other end, between them and the Museum of Darien.
Yeah, that, that landlord, which is Erstet Biddle, which is now, they changed it to Regency, Erstet sort of. They have chargers in all of their shopping centers, but I have appraised, you know, a handful of them and I've never seen a car sitting in them, but. Tesla, well, Tesla pays them, I think it's either 50 or 100 bucks per charger per month. So they're making money on it and they don't, it doesn't cost a limit or anything. You know, um, but it's, it's the way of the world and that's to your point relative to the state of Connecticut and all that stuff, they want superchargers all over the place, so if we, if we technically said no, they'd be like, oh, you know, you're a fossil fuel.
There are a bunch of Teslas around, so.
Yeah. Um, what else? Okay, do you want to add, um, other business and deliberate some of these quick things or did I talk too much?
Just the one matter, which is 23 Telkenny Trail.
Okay, you want to deliberate that now?
Sure.
Yeah.
Any questions? To me, it's pretty straightforward, it's just the guy spent a ton of dough to cut in the driveway. But, you know, that's his, that's his prerogative, they can do whatever they want. Um, Joe Katus, in my reading of all of his memos and whatnot, he went over it with a fine tooth comb, you know, a couple times.
Yep.
And he had, he had Andy Sembleides, who's, we've, he's a frequent flyer for ours. He had him change a bunch of stuff. Um, you know, and I think to your two points about the timing and the buses and your point about making sure you don't flood that other driveway, um, I think we clarified that. Um, you know, I can't really say anything more, I just want to make sure that we have bells and whistles around, um, the, the timing of the blasting, um, and the, the length of the blasting.
And the, and the pre blast survey.
Survey and the bridge.
And the bridge and all this, the good stuff and make the suggestions, you don't want them driving through whatever, I guess, the Telkenny association.
Yeah, left onto, um, Arrowhead.
Yeah.
And there's no special wildlife in the preserve across the street or things like that? That's, would you consider that a destructive?
Bee boxes back there, but that's about.
So there's no like endangered species over there?
There's no trails to walk through either.
Oh, they have little border.
Overground.
If there is, you, you don't want to go back there.
Okay.
Yeah, it's pretty nasty back there.
Let me get something deep into the weeds because we ran into this once before.
I can.
If it was osprey mating season.
Yeah.
And there's an osprey egg sitting in some kind of nest, you know, all bets are off, you can't, so. Because that happened on the Delphill, I didn't want.
I mean, I know on the, on the notices, I saw the Darien Land Trust got noticed, that, you know, they, they perceived their notice, the neighbors have received their notice, none of them are here. I guess there hasn't been a localized concern over it, let's come forward, okay?
Okay. Um, all right, so I guess what we're saying is please draft up an approval of that, um, request. All right, um, any other business we need to go over? Or do we vote, can we just vote technically on going into other business?
Oh, yeah.
We need two thirds, okay, five, nothing.
Somebody's taken the.
Yeah, you, you proposed it and you said, thank you. Um, I think that's it, right?
Okay.
The Yankees are probably in the third inning by now.
All right.
An invitation and motion to adjourn? There you go, Jamie's off the block. Jamie's there, she's got to get home. Jamie makes a motion, who makes the second, Adam?
I don't make seconds.
You don't make seconds?
I like staying in the meeting.